Excellent, thank you Kevin. Good evening and welcome to the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 7th. We're meeting at 7:00 PM at 91 Sawyer Street, Wilcox Commons. This is an in-person meeting. You can also watch us live on Cohasset 143 cable TV. You can check the back of the agenda for the Zoom link. Or we are streaming live on Facebook 143, on Facebook, right? Just like Facebook.
Classic.
Okay, sorry, I get a little pettled. Okay. I hear you. It's been a long day. Okay, may I have a call to order, please?
Julie Rollins here.
All ready, present.
Frog here.
Ellen Marr, present. I'd like to invite everyone who would like to join us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment? Any public comment, Kevin? No, no public comments. Oh, Mr. Tarpe, please come up, name and address.
Hello, everybody, Dan Tarpe, 12 Bates Lane. I'll be very brief. My purpose coming up this evening is thank the town. Specifically, the men and women of the Cohasset Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, Emergency Services, men and women of the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department, for the great job they did putting on the Touch a Truck event on Sunday afternoon. It was tremendous. It was well done, well organized, well attended. And I want to say not just the younger families and the kids there to touch the trucks. It was intergenerational. I saw neighbors from pretty much all aspects of the, of the age wavelength, if you will. It was really well done. We realize it came at a cost in terms of the people who were there putting it off for us. Lost a beautiful Sunday afternoon. They could have been home with their families. And I just wanted to let you know and let them know that we deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
Wow, that's great. That's. He's not here.
Okay.
Okay, so next up, special town election. So we are presently looking to set a date of November 15th, 2025?
That was the scheduled date.
Okay. So, um. Is there any objection, if I move this to after the town? Special Town Meeting warrant review?
No.
On the agenda, okay, so can I have a motion to move setting the special town election date to after the special town meeting warrant review?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Now, you go on. I think it's just the juxtaposition, I should have caught it when I did the agenda. My apologies. Okay, so special town meeting warrant, this updated, Lisa gave us all copies.
Yeah, this is, this is fresh. This also should be a, this is a one pager.
She gave it to us, yeah.
So, that's for the RTF, you should have it.
Lisa dropped it on, well, your page looks different.
That's the one page.
Yep.
Yep.
So if you want, just walk it through. It's actually tonight, we tied up, so. So, it's part of this, here to a one pager that will go out to the RTF.
Microphone, because nobody can hear me. Put it on.
So, we'll walk through the warrant.
Sure.
Article 1 is all done? Everyone's voted it?
Chris, may I say one thing about Appendix B?
Yeah.
Because I said right away that I'd love to see if you could, and that is understaffing?
Yeah.
If you could put how many of each, in each category? How many full-time staff? How many part-time staff?
Yep.
Because I've heard a couple of folks in community asking questions about who the staff are and how many there are, how many we're supporting. So, thank you.
I think I know there was something I don't want to make sure.
Perfect, yeah, we'll do more information.
We'll review the balance of it when we get to that warrant article.
Sure.
Okay.
So, Article 2, this is the updated bills. This is ready to go. There was one addition, unfortunately. The pest control company, which we might be using before, gave a bill to me literally last week. For services, after I asked them in June if there were any ones. So, it's six hundred and twenty dollars. Advisory, we voted this last time. So this is also.
Okay. All right, so may I have a motion to recommend to town meeting Article 2 unpaid bills of previous years?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it?
David, can I?
All right, Mr. Farag made the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For capital improvement projects, that's all ready and follow you. All the floor projects that are on here have been unanimously recommended. And there'll actually be some propicing of water, some older projects that will actually take down four hundred and twenty thousand for water. So, I don't remember having some fifty thousand dollars on the motion. Propicing someone. So, that's good, so. The question is, are these articles, are any of these projects?
And the bus lease is really just a swap? It's not, it's not necessarily new spending?
No, it's not spending, actually. Because spending was actually allocated in spring and was never spent. So it's actually a little bit less, I believe that was twenty-five thousand dollars. And this lease is for less than twenty-four, so it's actually.
Okay. And I think this enterprise fund, you know, part A on this is a good example of how enterprise funds can be used to support their operations and capital improvements without getting, you know, the tax levy at all. Does anyone have any questions on this?
No, the only comment I make is I'm happy to see on the Water Department that they're going to be expanding the sludge lagoons that are out there, which is much needed. It's a part of the process to help get the plant back where it needs to be. So, it's a, it's the first step, but it's a good first step. And I think hopefully this can be highlighted, the town, that this is going to be the first step on a journey for the. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so may I have a motion to recommend Article 4 Capital Improvement Projects to Town Meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 5.
Article 5. Okay, Article 6, okay, the Cohasset Public Safety Building. Um, Mr. Senior, Ms. Larry, do you mind if I say a few things right now? Okay, so, last night there was a joint meeting between the Cohasset Advisory Committee and the Cohasset Capital Budget Committee. And I believe in one way, shape or form, all of us attended as individuals or watched the meeting. And what came out of it, it's very hard to dispute the fact that the town needs a new police station that is functioning, that is efficient and versatile enough to transition as policing evolves. As, you know, more cybercrime happens. We saw last week in Hingham how the use of drones was very effective in apprehending an individual who had been breaking into multiple cars. And it's a little bit, you know, a wave of the future. And so after reviewing all of that and listening to our colleagues on capital and advisory, their questions and their concerns, which is their function, it's their function to question these projects. It's their function to, to ask questions, to share their concerns and provide guidance to the select board and therefore to the town. And last night, we saw a lack of clarity from the Fire Department, their operational structure, where they were going to be positioning Engine 1 and ambulance 1 and Engine 2 and ambulance 2. We heard concerns about our plans for Elm Street, how we were going to fund it. Was it going to be part of the bigger picture? Or was it going to be funded in a different way? Through a slower progressive schedule of maintenance and repairs? Which is what we had been talking about, but we hadn't articulated in a clear and finite way what that financing plan would be. We've heard requests, we heard requests last night and from other meetings from capital and advisory about, let's look at some benchmarking of other districts, let's see what they pay, let's see what their space needs are, what, what is required for a public safety building? We haven't completed that. I think it needs to be a much more comprehensive look at that. We have to look at the right communities as well. We can look at communities our size, we can look at communities adjacent to us, we can look at a lot of different, lot of different factors. And I just wanted to share with my colleagues on the board and therefore the public in this public meeting that I think we have more work to do to give this initiative as much chance of success as possible. It's a large amount of money for our town to spend. And I think it's appropriate to study it even further. And I would like the board to have a conversation, a deliberation about perhaps taking this off the warrant and moving it to a town meeting in the spring. Whether it's a special town meeting, an early spring, or annual town meeting. But the, these are, these are my thoughts. This is what kept me up last night after watching capital and advisory and going through my notes over the last several weeks. So I will open it up to my colleagues.
Ellen, I have very similar thoughts to you after the meetings last night. I wholeheartedly agree that we need police and fire on King Street. All right, I believe we need police and fire on King Street. I support that project a hundred percent. I am really committed to supporting all infrastructure improvements in the town. And I really would like to see it move forward, but I don't think in its current state, it would have as good of a chance of passing a town meeting and on the ballot if we were to proceed right now with the information that we have now and the information that the public has available, both of them right now. So, I agree with you and I would be in favor of delaying this until the spring.
Thank you. Mr. Farag?
Okay. Well, I guess I've watched the meetings too, and I want to thank the Capitol Budget and the Advisory Board for asking the tough questions and going through the projects, which is what they do, or any article for that matter. But with this, I do think that the question is, is the article ready for prime time? For the town to be presented to town meeting for approval? And I think unfortunately, it's going to need more time in order to do that. There's definitely some things that need to be worked out within the project. You know, obviously, the amount, you know, scope, things of that nature. There's going to be some look, obviously by capital budget regarding some benchmarking. But the only thing I would say is, is that, so on that side, we could definitely move it to next year. But I would say there are some downfalls to that. It's not like hiring a landscaper to have someone build a public safety building for you. So to just put it off and to say, well, we don't need that, we'll let it, we'll wait till the next spring. I think one of the issues there that Cohasset is going to have is that when you bid a project, if it fails or if you don't go through with it, and we've had two town hall projects that went down, this one would be basically postponed. The issue is going to be is when you rebid a project, is what kind of bids you're going to get? Because people in the industry spend thousands of dollars to come up with the bids in order to do it. And so if they feel that it's not going to go through or that you're not going to give it the proper look that it needs, they're going to say, why should I even bid on it? And the less bidders you get, the less of a good price you're going to get, which means the cost of the project can potentially go up, let alone the external factors that are out there in, in the markets regarding, you know, prices and stuff like that. So I just think that people need to keep in the back of their head that while we can postpone it, and this will be a short postponement to put it together, that we do need to be wary of, of that it does go out to the market to bid. And if there's a lot of subs that bid on it, then there's the general contractor. And that if Cohasset gets a reputation that they're just a bunch of tire kickers and they're not going to buy it, unlike Situ, which has followed through on almost every project, we're not going to get the, the good price that citizens want. So I just put that up here as well. And then finally, I think there's a number of things regarding the service to the people that we need to look at. And we need to make sure that with any project, whether it's this one or any other, that, that, as it was talked about last night, that the second ambulance is the most certainly brought online and that it's able to be serviced and used for the town as well. One thing that people don't notice, and it's not been talked about by any board, is that Situ, the town next to us, North Situ, they're going to sewer North Situ, which is going to include that whole area, you know, with the pizza and the post office and everything like that. And once that happens, that area is going to blow up on steroids. So that means that every, every building that's one story can be two or three stories. That means you can put apartments and condos above all those complexes once sewer comes into play. So when that happens over time, we have to look at, because we have mutual aid between the towns, if, if some of the Situ firefighting and ambulances are out on a call and there's a fire or something in North Situ, guess who's coming to it? Cohasset is. Cohasset is going to have to be there with the ambulance, with the firefighters and what have you. And as the structures get bigger, the, you know, the potential for issues gets bigger. And also the amount of people that are going to be living there is going to go up drastically over a 10 to 20 year period. So that's something that's not on people's radar, but I want to bring it up. And that's something that the town will be obligated to, which means that we most definitely need that second ambulance ready, not only just for Cohasset citizens, but for, to comply with mutual aid and to make sure that everybody in town gets the proper service. So anyway, without being long-winded, I just want to bring the, some of those factors up and concur with what the Chairwoman said. Thank you.
It's great.
I'd be lying if I said I wasn't disappointed. Because I am. While I concur with putting the project off, I think there's a lot behind it. A lot of misconceptions are thrown out there. A lot of commentary, in all of them, I have heard, we support our police and fire, but, and well, we're at that but stage. I also was at the Capitol Advisory and they raised some very curious questions, which I have respect that, to quote my colleague, that we aren't really ready for prime time. To me, this project is too important, let's slide. And I'm hoping that by delaying it for a short period of time, that we continue with the forums. And so those forums are robustly attended, especially by the people that had to say, but, but still support our police and fire. And that they offer some input. We expand the working group to include the citizen or citizen who wants to get on or town groups. Anyone who thinks that they can offer something, bring something to the table. Again, I just think that this coming at the town right now and hoping to not distract from police and fire, because again, I said it a long time ago. I don't think there's any price we can put on public safety, the safety of our kids, our residents, the health and well-being of our town hall staff, our police and fire personnel. They work their tails off and I feel like Cohasset right now, we're way behind the curve. Every one of our surrounding towns has at least rebuilt, redone public safety buildings, not us. So I'm hoping at the next iteration that town people do get involved and they decide what they want for the police and fire. And that they join or partake in the, in the environment, doing what we're trying to do with the buildings and for our safety personnel. So I do hope, continue all of the forums. And that when we approach the town, that we're all lockstep as a town. That's just my fervent hope, is that this time around, that the Cohasset is behind us in this endeavor. That's, I don't think there's anything more important than our public safety and the safety of everybody in town. So, but I do concur with what we made presentation of.
Thank you. Michelle, I'd like, I'd like to talk to, have you opine on this a little bit? Because you have been the, the town point manager and what your feelings are. I, I'd like to express first, on behalf of the board, my extreme appreciation for your dedication to the project and your hard work and understanding how often you had to pivot, sometimes multiple times during the day when priorities change or requests change or questions come in to be answered. And in my opinion, from my observation, you've handled it all with grace and professionalism. And this, this is not any reflection on you. You've been a stalwart supporter and an advocate and presenting, you know, in an unbiased way. And we appreciate that very much. So if you have any comments about, you know, our, our thought process here about postponing it, I would love for you to weigh in.
So I do agree, postponing it for a short period of time to make sure that the community has all the information they need, they have an opportunity to ask more questions of the public forums, which gives us an opportunity to maybe pivot once again, and get the project that's right for the community. Because what we're hearing right now is we might not have the correct project for the community at this present time, but we will get there. There are so many great, fresh ideas out there that will require us to pivot just a little bit. And I think if we make those small changes, I think we'll have buy-in by most of the community. And I think that's really what it's all about.
Mr. Senior? Okay.
I think we're having a nonstop conversations for the last 10 days. And I, and I was on both meetings last night too. So it's all the same, and I heard the same comments. And as, as all of you said, it's not about no, it's about what about? We need to ask some questions. So I think that time is invaluable, and I think there's already a ceiling set up. So we'll do our best to continue to get information out and also make sure that it's being shared amongst the public. So when this does come in front of voters, I will, and it's, it's there.
Sure.
One more thing I'd like to add is our communication to the boards and the public. I think heading into this, it's our hope that we're all lockstep. Everybody's on the same page, so God forbid, I get a question and I answer it and Michelle is answering the same question, but with a different answer. And it's not anybody's fault, it's just communication flow. So we have to tighten our delivery system up. And as Chris said, Michelle said, hopefully, we didn't hear no's, but the unanswered questions are answered. And we approach this with all hands up to Tommy. Thank you.
Mr. Tarpe is in the office and in, in the room, and he's been part of the working group. And I don't know if he would like to opine a little bit or not. And I never miss giving you the opportunity that's very clear here.
That's our 611.
Yeah.
I agree with Mr. Farag that Cohasset may be gaining a reputation for not delivering within the public construction group, so to speak. The other thing that I think we all know is that delaying this has two costs. First of all, God forbid, we don't have an ambulance up on 3A. If some poor kid gets hurt on a soccer field or something like that and they're delayed, medical response is delayed because of the train, two to three minutes, by the time you slow down, regain momentum, that's what they're doing. We've all been stopped by the train, probably dozens of times. It's only a matter of time before that ambulance is stopped on a very important run. And then how are we going to look? And how are we going to look ourselves in the face, saying that we didn't spend the money to improve our public safety posture? The other thing is, you know, in terms of money, as you all know, that every day we delay, the cost of this goes up. So what we can get for eighteen million dollars today is not what we can get three months from now. It's going to be less, less than that. That said, I was, I didn't watch the meetings last night that you've all seen. I've heard about them. I was at a meeting earlier today about, about the building and I, I pretty got, got a pretty good synopsis. Closes and others opens. Public safety is kind of like a hard thing to wrap yourself around. So if we have groups who oppose the ambulance being up on 3A and expanding public safety in that regard, then perhaps we look at other options that other towns have used. It might be time to consider privatizing EMS. Now, I'm not a fan of that. I'm a big fan of the Cohasset Fire Department. They took good care of me. But at the end of the day, we have to have an ambulance service up on 3A for all the reasons we all know. And if we can't wrap our arms around that as a town, you know, using internal sources, then it's time to think outside the blocks and come up with other possible solutions. We'd be remiss if we don't. So I'm with you guys in terms of delaying it. I, I have full confidence that it will get done. This is kind of a hiccup in the road, but I hope that the delay doesn't cost us more than we're willing to pay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, so if there's no further comment, Kevin, there's nothing online? Okay, thank you. So may I have a motion to remove Article 6 from the Cohasset Special Town Meeting Warrant of November 3rd?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And just, I just want to dovetail a little bit off in, just in terms of closing comments. You know, we've talked about this working group, Michelle, Mr. Tarpe, Mr. Grady have been on it along with the chiefs. And I think, I think perhaps we should charge a bit more robust working group and include some of our representatives from capital and advisory and perhaps another citizen at large. So, so that more input could be had. And the questions that are typical of advisory and capital can be answered in the working group and not in a joint meeting a month before town meeting. I think that would be very positive. Mr. Grady mentioned the forums. I think we should continue with the forums, the ones we have scheduled, and we should have them ongoing. And I think we should pivot them from, instead of selling the project, to listening about, to people about the project and take a little different tact on that. And I, I would charge everyone that as we talk about this, we need to consider planning for the future. I think we've heard that from everyone outside this community who has built public safety. And we have to plan for the future. We have to plan, I don't necessarily mean expansion, because Cohasset is a small town. We're not going to have another 3, 4, 500 unit development unless the NBTA communities goes in. But that, that's, that's neither here nor there at this point. The planning for the future in terms of the needs of policing, what policing will look like in the future, what apparatus might be needed in the future, what technology might be needed in the future? And because the building is only new one time when you open the door and, and you can't, you can't redo it. So we have this tremendous opportunity to, to do that. So, thank you, thank you to everyone, to the existing working group. I look forward to hearing from a revitalized, more robust working group going forward. Because the work will continue. It's not going, the pace of work will not stop because it's off the warrant. The work will continue. Okay. So we will get to our partners on advisory and capital of our conversation, that probably watching. Okay. All right, next up, Article 7, Creation of an Enterprise Fund for the Recycling Transfer Facility.
And just to say now, we're going to renumber all the articles. We can use that numbers we see now, we're going to renumber them all and fix this so.
Okay, thank you.
So this has been randomly by advisory.
Yep. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this?
Is this where Appendix B would?
Well, it's going to be, it's not going to be called Appendix A, but yes.
No. Article 7, the appendix you handed to us.
This is where this, they would go, they would go.
Yes. Seven, yes. So we should discuss it now, is that, that's what I'm asking? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. My suggestion is that we put something in here, either on the appendix or in the article itself, letting folks know that what the fees will be for the transfer station if this does not pass. letting folks know that what the fees will be for the transfer station if this does not pass.
Same page.
Because they have no way of knowing by looking at this. It just seems to me that they're going to look at this and say, the prices are going up and it's tied to the enterprise fund. And I actually read something similar in the, in the anchor that was very misleading. That conflated the enterprise fund and the price increases. So I want to make it very clear that without the enterprise fund, the price for the transfer station is going to skyrocket. That approximate amount, I think, should be included here. And the estimates for what the cost will be with the enterprise fund should be included. So that people can make an educated decision, informed decision about this enterprise fund. That's my recommendation.
You know, I think it's a great one. You could just do a chart.
Exactly.
Without the fund, first sticker, second sticker, senior sticker, you know.
We've, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Talked about it before.
The, the, the fees, those other fees have already been voted on.
Right.
So, so that needs to be put upfront. This isn't, you know, an idea that's, that's already locked in. And then the other one would be the, the, the opposite of it of what would happen if, you know, approximately if it wouldn't be.
Yeah. It's voted in, locked in if this passes. And we, we need to make that clear that those prices were agreed upon and voted on, assuming the enterprise fund went through.
Right.
And so we need to make that clear. So I just think this needs a little bit. It's not ready for prime time if we're going to use that expression again.
I have a chart that we already did.
Great. Yeah, great. Thank you.
Would it be worthwhile to add the other fees, like the bag prices and, and the date that that's going to be effective?
We had talked about it in my office. I decided not to put it in there when I can, because I didn't want people to conflict too much.
Okay.
As I think the contracts is really helpful. And I don't want people to think that they're going to, that this is going to set the whole thing away.
Okay.
But, but on the, on the, on the webpage, on the town's webpage, it's all there.
Okay.
The sheets are, they are.
Okay.
In fact, Frank has also looked at me. He did comparisons of what private corridor costs. And I think we need to put more of that on the site too. So this is the real, this is, this is the causes, the current causes.
Mr. Grady has a comment?
Yeah, not that bleak. But having sat with Frank, Brian, and a couple of different meetings, you know, we saw some of the confusion that was out there. And I think we did, we did some good things in setting it to rights. But that's just a small group. I think Parrot on Julie. Maybe it's transparent is publish that chart about the feed hubs. We haven't really determined, we never voted on this. We hopefully weren't anticipating it. But maybe a brief explanation as to why not skyrocket. We don't want people to feel that we're trying to hang that over their heads to get what we want, which is just trying to negate that. It's not the case.
I agree.
We just have to state facts as to why we would see prices because they, in all the meetings I've sat through, they want the same services. But they don't want the price hikes. And there is a misnomer out there that these hikes that we're doing now, which are incremental at best, you know, they're necessary, are the cause of the enterprise fund. There's some confusion there where, so, and Frank, you heard that too. It's, they said the same thing. And we also listened to some people who have private pickup. And I think this is said already, I apologize if I'm reavening the wheel, is that one gentleman was paying, say fifty dollars a month. It's a new customer. But what's that up to a year? All right. So, and he's not getting the same services. He gets, once a week, they come and pick it up and gets his thing. And he doesn't go through a lot of trash. But I just think that we have to, on the hikes that if the enterprise fund doesn't fly, is why we have to do it. Because that sixty-one thirty-nine still exists. And we have to meet that shortfall to address the other parts of the town's needs. So that's where, you know, you, you do a breakdown. I know we have it up there, but say a P and L, I know you guys have sat and just make sure that people can look at this holistically and say, this can really happen. It can fly on its own. That's, I think, I think we have to get that out. Heard that from a couple of people is like, any sort of P and L cost projection. I, I see that we've got the employees, people questioning the employees that are working out there. But I don't think too much is enough in a case like this, as long as they can read it black and white and say, oh, that makes sense. We have to figure out a way to have it make sense where it didn't the last time. And we're, you know, the same as what happened with the vote that we just put aside for time being is we have to have it clear. It's still clear. Going in the benefits. And I also suggest, maybe this is not the right time to do it, is that we have engaged a town committee to look at the RTF.
Well, that's our next topple.
Oh, then I take it back. Actually, I said, I was speaking to.
You were. So when we, when we get there, we will have Mr. Marchionne come up and we'll, we'll discuss the next agenda item.
All right. So that ends my diatribe. Get, get the, if you get the information about the cost increases, just to separate the confusion. How's that?
Okay, Mr. Farag.
Thank you. As we talked about before, you know, for people who haven't seen, the, putting the RTF into an enterprise fund is a strategic budgeting tool. It's not a budgeting gimmick. And it's a way to keep it from chewing on the town budget because it runs at a deficit. And so if it's in an enterprise fund, it will end up, it end up balancing, the extra money can get put into retained earnings, which can be used to replace capital needs out there. And the whole reason doing this is not to increase costs, but to slow the rate of increased costs in the future. We do not have a budget want to keep the, the cost down from all the external factors around us. From us dumping everything from the RTF to CMAS and, and for the amount that, of, of things that need to be recycled, that need to be taken off of site. We do not have control over those prices. So this provide, the enterprise fund provides a buffer for that. So that we can slow any rate of increase in the future because we know the cost of that over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years is going to go up. And so that's why it's so important to do this for the town. And the other thing is, is to reiterate again, is that this does not take any money from the schools at all. And that the schools have been made whole in their budget. And that what this will do is, is again, it will keep from chewing up money in the budget. So it actually has the opposite factor in making, in, in not taking money away if we didn't have it. So for all those reasons, and there's even more. And the last thing is I've, I've heard that a lot of people have said, well, what about private pay or pickup? We do have some places with pickup. We have some apartments that get pickup. We have some homes that do, and that's fine. But for a whole town contract, everyone has to understand with an RTF, if we were, which we do not want to do. If you ever close an RTF, you are never opening it again. DEP is not going to let you reopen it after you close it. So you can't go out, get somebody to come in, take all the trash, say, we don't like that contract, let's go back and do it. No, you're stuck. And if you look at the other services that do the, the trash pickup, which is a handful of two towns, we're a very small town. We're not, we don't have purchasing power. And if you look at most recently, one of them, which was Republic, this summer, they were on strike from July all the way through September. And so they had to get backup workers during that time. And once the strike ended, even though trash was everywhere in all these towns, the workers, the replacement workers sued Republic because they said they were getting screwed for not getting paid from them. So that's the kind of company you're going to deal with if you get townwide trash pickup. So it's not going to fare well for the town. And then, and then also, if you look at with the other towns, as I said, we're not going to have the purchasing power with them. Other towns that have RTFs, keep them open. Our neighbors, Hingham Situit, they have RTFs. They, they keep them open. They run them. Just like we do. So I, I think for all those reasons, and, and we've talked about it before, this is very important article to get through. And hopefully the citizens, if you have any questions regarding the RTF, there's a whole bunch of information on, on our webpage, but call us as well. I'd be happy to talk to anybody who has any questions or doesn't understand the enterprise fund. It needs to be talked to before town meeting and get an explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So may I have a motion to recommend to town meeting for current Article Seven, Creation of an Enterprise Fund for the Recycling Transfer Facility?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article Eight is already approved. Article Nine, one-time costs, Mr. Senior?
Yeah. So this is all the same circle one. So one was added after some internal conversations. It's like twenty-five thousand dollars for state mandated. So we actually had a meeting on plovers. I think it's next week.
It's January seventeen.
Yes. So, and because of plovers, two of the last eight years, the state's going to require that we have a robust response. I don't know. We don't really know who's going to call the SWAT and man saw it on and most likely. And we'll have to do some of the training, whatever one of you all spent. Which is important now, particularly since it also affects events. So we definitely have to do that for them.
Right.
So, and advisory did vote this whole thing.
And, and I appreciate you going in my stead. Listening in. Thank you. I appreciate it.
As I said before, on plovers, I, I, I've dealt with them at the state level. We gotta, we gotta fill those cracks in, in, in the, in the town parking lot. We have to make sure because otherwise they can nest in any sand, even if it's in the parking lot. So everything that parking lot needs cleaned up, all the cracks need to be filled and relined to make sure. Because otherwise, when we have July fourth next year, or we have some of the things that we're looking to do, we're going to have a great swatch of the parking lot taped off because piping plovers are going to be there. So while they usually stay on the beach, they can get to other areas. So that's, that's my two cents on that.
There's the plovers flipping us the bird when we try to park.
Maybe the twenty-five thousand, we can buy a town hawk.
Okay. May I have a motion to recommend to town meeting, current article number nine, allocation of funds for one-time costs?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article ten, we've already voted. Article eleven, we voted. Article twelve.
We're still waiting on, I believe they're going to get presentation for our speaker committee. And if I just got hold to attend, to attend, they make their recommendations.
I would suggest to my colleagues, we do the same. We make our recommendation at special town meeting.
I concur.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Do I need to vote that?
No. That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Article thirteen, the citizens petition. So we, we've heard the petition. I don't know if we need to, to go back through everything again. For anyone online? Nope. Okay. Any comments from the select board?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Said it last week, I'll say that I it's not that I'm for or against. I want to hear what the school committee has to say. So I would, I would abstain. I would recommend moving this to town meeting. That's my comment.
Okay.
Because I do, the school committee's up tomorrow night. And this is on the move they made, for the reasons, and I'm not knocking them. But I would like to hear, I'd be more comfortable hearing what the school committee has to say with their recommendations for, before I cast a vote on it.
Okay.
I talked about this last week. I shared my view that this is a school committee issue. And for that reason, I don't feel comfortable voting on this until I've heard from them officially.
Okay.
I do, in theory, agree with the idea of free afternoon kindergarten. I do agree with that idea. And I would love for us as a town and a school committee to be able to get there at some point. Of course, I'm speaking as a parent of twins. We had to pay twice one year and of an older daughter. So I, I understand the issue. I, I feel for the petitioners. I really do. And it is something I'd like to see eventually. I just don't feel comfortable voting on it currently in its current state.
Mr. Farag?
Generally speaking, because it's, because school has already started, this is a reimbursement from the budget that was already decided last year and approved by town meeting. So generally, as a policy, that's a pretty, it's not a good policy to have. I do agree with having, I'd agree with having full day kindergarten. All three of my children had full day kindergarten, which I paid for, like so many other parents in town. There's, there's certainly some, you know, other issues to talk about with this, but I would, I really, I agree with everybody else. I would like to hear from the school committee because we haven't heard from them on this issue at all, from all of the people that came in front of us regarding this issue, even though they didn't necessarily go in front of the school committee, which would have been more of the proper place to deal with this. Again, there's other issues to unpack regarding how they're trying to get the money for this and everything like that. But like I said, I think we could certainly hear what the school committee has to say. And I'd like to, like to see their vote as well.
Okay. That, that's fine. Mr. Senior, this informational summary will be as written.
Yeah, this, this should put this in.
Okay.
So one of the questions I was going to ask as well is, is the board want, I mean, you want, you want anything else in here? To, about this?
Well, yes, but.
Are we, I guess I'm going to, are we allowed to make changes to the?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
If you're going to supplement it.
We can add.
Correct.
Our old informational sum.
There's never been one that's been quite so robust in a time like that here. And they should be more simple. There's just.
You mean, do you mean like a a response to, to these suggestions? Is that what you're thinking?
I mean, you don't have to. I was asking.
I, I think whether it's in the warrant or it's in the motions, or it's in our next several meetings, I, I think based on the the information that is out there, that is not entirely reflective of our budget, our budget process, which is painstaking. We went through weeks and months, okay, of reviews by department, of versions of, of talking to school committee, coming back, talking to capital, talking to advisory, every, there is a process. And to, to ha- have it upended at this point in time halfway through the year, to Mr. Farag's point about having the taxpayers pay a refund is, is a bit of a challenge. I agree philosophically that full day kindergarten should not have tuition. Philosophically, I don't think you could get anyone to say otherwise. So I will agree with my, my colleagues to make a recommendation at special town meeting. And hear what the school committee has to say, because we can't get a vote in by the time this needs to go to print, correct? Yeah. And regarding information, I believe you might be showing some stuff in, so in your town manager comments, is that correct?
Yes. That was correct, depending on the mood of the board.
No, I think, I, I think the board would.
Okay.
I, I would like to see it. So, so that's Article thirteen.
So then the last thing you need to do is to vote to adopt a warrant as amended. Which means we put it to print and give the council, the board, sign.
Okay. So may I have a motion to the town Cohasset warrant for special town meeting, Monday, November third, 2025, as amended?
Could I, could I ask a question?
Okay.
Now, Chair put it that when we go to town meeting, could we make that recommendation that we will make our recommendation again? I think everybody at this table in theory supports free kindergarten. But could we make a, we make our recommendation, I'm sorry, after the school committee makes theirs?
Yeah. So the motion, if it would normally have anything up to date. So if you vote any time to now and for a town meeting, that would be in the motion.
Fair enough. Okay. Then I'll side second.
Okay. So Ms. Grady made a motion to adopt the warrant as amended. Is there a second? So Ms. Grady made a motion to adopt the warrant as amended. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Farag. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you should officially, I guess, to be tempted to close it and to publish.
Okay, may I have a motion to close the warrant as approved and publish it?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Yes, the, the final she is, there's two, there's two copies of it, I believe.
Mr. Senior, I'd like to thank you and your staff. Um, and whomever you enlist to, to get the warrant put together and to make, we had some sequencing changes we requested and. So.
So Lisa is right here. I really want to thank.
Okay.
I want to thank especially Tracy, the owner, she's been in this for twelve years.
Yeah.
Through every zig and zag, and she is incredibly smooth and, and has sweats this out and does an amazing job.
She does, she does. So, so thank you very much. Um. Okay, so congratulations, everybody. The warrant is closed for special town meeting. So now, um. I. And the motion to change the date for special election. Um, was strategic because in my mind, I knew that I wanted to ask my colleagues about. Article six. So now at this point, we don't need to set a date for the special town election because there's nothing. In terms of a, a tax levy that will be impacted. So, um. And there are no ballot questions, correct? So we will not have a special town election, um, that was tentatively scheduled for November fifteenth. Okay, excellent. All right, um, next up, RTF Advisory Committee Discussion. Mr. Marconi, would you come up? So we just, um, advisory and, um, select board just approved. The article for a, um, enterprise fund and. Several meetings ago during a presentation, Mr. Farag, um, mentioned, and I thought it was an excellent idea to have an advisory group, at least to get a straight first. Couple of cycles, financial cycles, operational cycles. To report out and to engage, um, and to measure how, how are we doing and what can we do better? And, um. I, I thought it was a great idea. So, Mr. Frog, if you want to take over, you've had ideas and conversation.
Sure, before I, I. I get into some of the, uh, the details, the RTF, the idea, the simple was that, um, when we, that. Going back to when we had the fire, as everybody knows, post that, um, we did a, hit a reset button. Uh, meeting the whole town, the boards and looking at the RTF, how it was managed, what needs to be done there, what efficiencies need to be taken. Um, dealing with the insurance company and dealing with the equipment, everything needed a total reset to look at how the service delivery was happening there. And so from that, of course, um, there were efficiencies, uh, and, and things that were added there, as you know, if you go there today. Um, and then, uh, beyond that, uh, to try and set up an enterprise fund to, to manage it well, and not just for today, but in the future. Uh, because one of the pieces of an enterprise fund is that you can, um, save money, use that for capital in the future. And the capital items to replace things at the RTF therefore wouldn't bump into the other, um, things that bump into the, the capital budget. Which, you know, capital budget, they get about six million, five, six million dollars in requests, and they only have about one, one and a half million to spend every year. So a lot of stuff gets left on the cutting room floor. Um, so anyway, I came up with the idea of that we should have a, an advisory committee made up of. Uh, it ended up with report to the select board, of course, which has the overall authority over the RTF. And that it should contain a select board liaison, should contain, uh, Frank, who is the manager of the RTF and. Um, Brian Joyce, who's the head of DPW, and two citizens. Uh, and that way, um, we could get some citizen involvement. And what the advisory committee would look at, they'll come up with a charge, but. They would look at the, the whole management of the RTF, um, you know, inventory of the equipment. Looking at, of course, we talked about earlier about getting some traffic counts out there to see, uh, what the, what the traffic flow is. Um, review, review of the pilot program, which was going to be put into place. And just everything, uh, concerning the, the RTF from, from A to Z, from stem to stem. So, uh, with that being said, um, some of the issues that are out there, or at least, uh, Frank can give us an update and. And then talk about it, uh, from his professional perspective, um, what would be needed and some of the issues that would be, need to be, um, discussed. And, and looked at by this, uh, potential committee.
Right.
So Frank, it's the floors here, it's here.
Uh, uh, thank you very much. Thanks for having me again. Um, this, this idea is great because it's a collaborative. Uh, so when, uh, more folks get together and talk different ideas, things get done. Um, as I said from day one, I've been here almost a year now. Uh, you have a very valuable asset in the RTF, and I agree with you, David. If you close it, it will never reopen. The RTF is your stabilizer in a very dynamic, ever-changing, highly regulated industry. It, it is what it is. Um. Cohasset residents have been fortunate, uh, to have this facility. Um, even though it was a little bit antiquated and whatnot, um, still, they were very fortunate. I come from. The, the trash world and my last twenty years have been servicing residential customers. Um, I didn't do too good, um, didn't have too many customers in Cohasset because of my competition, the RTF. So, um, I'm glad that the board and, and a lot of, uh, uh, citizens and definitely the support from. Uh, Chris, Michelle, Brian, um, I'm very pleased that, uh, we're all on the same page. So I think the mission is, for me anyways, to make sure that we give Cohasset, uh, a modern, safe. E- environmentally friendly, um, low-cost provider facility. And how do you do that? Uh, if you remember, um, pre-fire, uh, there were three compactors there, um, twenty-five years old. Uh, two, sorry, twenty-five years old. One was maybe five, six years old. We salvaged one. We only bought one. Right? So capital, capital improvements, rolling stock. The RTF has one roll-off truck. Uh, twenty, twenty sixteen. Replacement costs three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe wait a year or two to get one. We have one loader that was purchased no after the fire, and we have a backup. Backhoe's also a twenty sixteen vintage. Uh, we own some, uh, recycling containers, uh, we bought two roofed recycling containers. Basically, we did what we had to do to get the facility open, but we have no backup equipped. Um, so logistically, every day I worry, if something goes down, we have to scramble. That's the nature of the business. Uh, operating days. So a lot of folks think that the facility is open four days a week. It's not. It's open seven days a week. So in planning, you know, I have to take that approach. We have to work seven days a week. Um, in one of the forums, I was, I was asked, why do we have five full-time employees? Well, we don't. We have one full-time, um, working foreman, myself, and then I have. One HEO, part-time, no benefit, and three attendants, part-time, no benefit. And unlike in the real world, when part-time could be up to twenty-five, thirty hours, they're twenty hours. So I have to manage a schedule, uh, that I have to provide. Attendance, HEOs, management, seven days with a very limited amount of staff. Also, on one of the issues that we have to think about, and I, and I'm. I'm hopeful that, that the enterprise fund will pass because, you know, to manage. An enterprise, to manage a business, you have to work in the profit margin, right? It's my job to make sure I'm covering cost. Um, and that's the profit mentality. Profit's not a bad word, but. For, for the reset, yes, we saw equipment logistics, but it gave us a chance to look at our vendors. Who we're doing business with, what is our actual cost? The numbers that we presented and, uh, Chris. Had a great chart. I mean, he showed us the actual cost of a bag. So a lot of folks say. The cost of a bag is forty-six cents that we buy from Way Zero. It's not. It's almost three dollars. That's our cost to get it out the door. So. What's on my radar is a little bit of everything. We, we have, um, a very fragile. System in that there's not too many options for us to take our waste. If you look at the RTF, it is for Cohasset. The longest ride may be the outskirts of town, ten minutes. I, I can't see anywhere else that you can drive. And dispose of your trash recyclables in most of the mass waste banned items. If this goes away and you go to private service, you, you can have garbage pickup, a tow or whatnot, but. TVs, mattresses, all these other incidentals that people don't think about might not be able to be provided by your, your hauler. You know, not everybody picks up propane tanks. So we're always watching that, you know, we're always, uh, fearful, what happens if there's a hiccup? David mentioned the strike, uh, with Republic. Well, we had an issue with propane tanks and we didn't get service for about six weeks. What do you do? You have to go to a contingency plan. And we did, we contained them. Um, we're always looking to better the facility. Um. Waste oil is coming online. Batteries came online. We trained the staff, uh, fluorescent bulbs, um. These things cost money. You know, we're not adding, a lot of these fees are, are free and they're based on the, uh, sticker costs. Um, and we're doing a great job at managing what we have. We're also in a very competitive, uh, employee market, right? Just like everybody else. Drivers, um, operators. We, we're competing with the private world. Uh, it takes special licensing to work up at, at the RTF. An attendant cannot do the job of an HEO. It just can't happen. So we have to juggle that and we have to struggle with the fact that what if? Um. There's a lot to do. Uh, it's a work in progress, but I really appreciate everybody's patience and, and support. Um, we've made tremendous strides. We've actually lowered the cost of a few items going out the door. Um, and by paying attention to our internal cost, uh, enterprise fund. Doesn't mean we're gonna raise the prices. We can do whatever we want. You still set the, the rates, um, with feedback from us. Again, I, I really truly believe, um. As, as a private hauler, I always had. Transfer station envy, right? Because if you have that, you control your, it, that's your, that's your ace in the hole. Um. That's why Hingham and Sitewood put a lot of money and thought to it because they do understand the ramifications. There's a lot of work to be done still. Uh, we're getting there. We're making great, great progress. Um, again, I, I thank everyone for letting me be the sword of your station. Um, you, you know. Our, our goal is to, to really, uh, give you, uh, a number one, uh, Class A facility.
If I could just, before we get to questions, if I could just add to that. Uh, with what Frank said, uh, we're very lucky, as you know, to have Frank, because he was in the business for so many years. And so, and to have somebody and have them transition on the town side and get that wealth of knowledge is very rare. Um, just a couple of things in the RTF that people remember, uh, some of the efficiencies, if you remember, for many, many, many years, you'd go there and drop off your card, cardboard. And it was collected in basically a laundry basket that was then, um, uh, pushed out by, uh, one of our workers into the. Uh, you know, the bigger, bigger bin, and that was done obviously because of safety, but it was also not the greatest use of labor that you could have. And have that over the last twenty years. So that efficiency has come into play where it's now just, you now just, uh, self-putted and self-contained. What do you call it?
Compact.
Uh, compact. Thank you so much. Uh, we're also looking to hopefully have future efficiencies. Um, so these are just the first ones that have, that Frank was able to roll out. And then as, as we've talked about before, when some people talk about getting, uh, an outside contractor instead to just do trash pickup. One other thing to remember is that one of the other downfalls of having that is that if there's future increases. Uh, most of those contracts that they have with towns, those increases go straight to the customer, to the town. So when you're halfway through the contract and their prices go up. The company hauling does not bear the risk for it. It is you as the customer and you as the town. And in the middle of that contract, you'd get a thing in the mail saying, guess what? Your price is going up now. And so that's something else that people need to know with most of the, uh, hauling contracts that, that people do with towns. So, um, I, I think we've, we've talked about it ad nauseam regarding why we don't want that. Uh, but those are some of the things that, that people might not know about that happens in other towns. Um, so with that being said, um, hopefully if we do go with this committee structures and advisory, um, we would have two citizens on it. And, um, we could definitely leave that open, um, so that we could also announce at the town meetings that anybody sitting there who doesn't see her tonight. Um, if they want to be on it, we could try and get the widest swath of citizens to apply for those positions. And then, um, bring back reports to the select board, uh, in the, in, in the future regarding all the different matters. And really fine-tune it and also put some of these, the information that's, um, gathered. Uh, get that on the town website so people can have a full transparent knowledge of how the RTF works and every single cost that goes involved with it. So. I'll pass it on from there.
Great, thank you. Ms. Wallace?
No comments.
Mr. Grady?
Just a fast one. Um, we discussed this one. You were in the private business. What happens when you have a captive audience?
Say that again.
What happens when you have a captive audience? These big car broke companies are buying up the.
Oh, oh, you control the market. Uh, just.
What companies usually do? I just want to get this out for the.
They, they raise the price. So in the last six months, three small haulers servicing our area, uh, sold. They got bought out. So now you have one, um, I wouldn't say they're regional, but when, when you don't have, um. When you don't have many options and you take the options that's given you, well. You're at the mercy. You said, want to get trash service picked up? Well, it's going to cost X. A lot of the smaller haulers also don't have the overhead, right? So when they do sell, that overhead from the bigger companies automatically goes, is passed on to the customer. It happens. It's, it's what happens. It will always happen.
We discussed this in the home review. It's a little business and I've seen it in HVAC, it's a little business. Smaller guys get bought up. The big ones are gonna raise the price to offset.
It happens.
That's something we'd really like to avoid.
Absolutely. Uh, like I said, I think we're, we're, we're actually, we lowered some, some rates internally. Uh, we talked to some vendors, negotiated some, some things. We, we did, uh. We made some logistics, um, improvements and changes that were operating tight with labor, but we're getting the job done. The, the facility is, is opening, uh, to traffic count. We can see up to five, six hundred cars on a Saturday and Sunday each day. Um, we can handle it. Uh, the, the staff is remarkable. Uh, very hardworking, uh, knowledgeable. Um, you know, you're working with the public, right? So not every day is, is pleasant. Um, but for the most part, too, I think the residents understand and, and they appreciate what we've done. Uh, we've made some physical changes. We've made some cultural changes. Um, and I think the RTF. And the residents, uh, I think we're, we're measured. Yeah.
Thank you. So, um, I just want to, um, comment on, I believe we have three traffic counters on.
Correct.
We put, uh, um, Cedar and North Main, Cedar and Hull Street, and at the opening.
Yes.
Okay, so those, those should be in. They've been ordered and they should be.
They're, they're in.
Oh, they're in, okay.
Uh, they're operational.
Okay.
Um, and we'll have some count, you know.
Have some data, yeah, to address the, you know, citizen concerns about increased traffic flow. So we'll have a, we'll have a baseline.
Correct.
Before we start a pilot program.
Correct, yes.
Um, and then I just want to make, make one, one quick comment about fees. It was, it was mentioned in, um, a reporting on. I, I think it's South Shore News, which is AI-generated. We're not implementing fees. Fees have been around for decades. And a parking sticker, um, when I was a kid. Was for the harbor and the beach and the RTF where you would back up and you'd throw your bags over. The landfill, right? And then they would burn it and, and dad would say, don't go so close to the edge or go closer to the edge. I mean, it would depend. But so. Parking stickers, facility stickers have been around for decades, for decades in this town. And fees for other things have been around also for decades. Athletic fees have been around. For decades. I believe the first one was implemented at the high school in two thousand and five. And then it had, it's had, up until this year, it's had one increase in, in almost twenty years. Went from one fifty to two. Went from 150 to 250 in the first year and it hasn't changed. So I just don't want people to think, oh, oh my God, we're starting all these fees again, you know, we're starting all these fees. They have been around and we are trying to get them to match the costs of operating our programs. Same with kindergarten. Kindergarten full day was not always an option. My oldest didn't have that option. Mr. Tarpy, I don't know if your older kids had the option of full day or not.
You're working with George.
Oh, yeah. So it's not new. And I just want to make that clear, that fee structure, and not in Cohasset and not new in any other town around on the South Shore or in the greater metropolitan Boston area. So, thank you very much. I look forward to working and in charge and seeing, you know, kind of a brief outline of the things you want to measure and getting this advisory committee together. Thank you. Okay, next up, Town Manager update.
I've got a little different tonight. So we're going to do a little data, a little data tonight. So it's been a lot of conversation.
Yes, speaking to the, thank you.
There's been a lot of conversation, a lot of things thrown around. It's always important to kind of right-size some of this. And we could do this for hours, I promise we'll do this for a few minutes. So this will all be one of those. So what you have on the very first chart, there's a whole long, long list of towns. This includes a whole lot of communities that have been benchmarked a lot of different ways for education. And the green, this is per pupil spending, this is not my data, this comes from the Department of Elementary and State of Education. So what the state does is it balances, it conforms to that so that it, because every community accounts for this in different ways. For example, regional school districts do healthcare, they do pension. If we get a town system, the town is telling us, and it's usually not in the school districts, usually in the different lineups. But the state collects all kinds of data and they kind of smooth it so that you can compare apples to apples. So if you see there, there's no asset, it's green. And every single district to the left is a regional high school district. Except for Hull, that's Hull up the front, Hull is at $28,000 a student. Last is almost at 22, just shy of 22,000 dollars a student. And again, just it costs more than a high school, a middle school, than it does to run a elementary school. It's just there's more expenses there. There's lab fees and there's all kinds of other programs. So and if you see going down the other way, for example, those are schools that are either like us or just an elementary district. My only difference is case, not quite sure how to run that they're elementary schools for a little bit, thousands of people, but that's what that's what Dessie says. So, and by the way, to our right, which is lower, is Hingham, Situate, or well, all immediate neighbors. And there are actually thousands of dollars less in total margin than this. Four thousand dollars of people less than Cohasset can put people's. Now, I'm not saying this to be all and end all, but it's important to see that Cohasset is not just low, it's actually high. And it's higher in the region. And again, I'm not saying that makes for a better education, but with the conversations about how much we spend, the town is spending by state standards as much or more than anybody else.
If I could ask about this. So again, you said this is from the Department of Education here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And they put this all together. And I think it's important to note that when you're doing, when you're looking at statistics for benchmarking, the most important thing is to get the research to then come up with a conclusion. And it's not to have a conclusion and then find the research that fits that conclusion. And it's been talked about for the last three months that Cohasset somehow, the select board does not support the schools, which is just outright nonsense. And when you look at this, Cohasset per pupil spends more than almost every town around us. And Hull, which is an anomaly, is frankly, if you look at it, it's because the last two years, they've graduated 65 and 64 kids in their senior class. So therefore you're going to spend more if you have the economy scale. Now, some people might step back, if you're looking at this, doing some analysis, you would say, well, Cohasset isn't as big as Situate, we're not as big as Hingham. And therefore, we, with the economy at scale, being a small system, that pumps up our number. Well, when you look at Dover, which was used as a, let's say, a marker for a town that's our size, we spend more than that. When you look at Sunbury, we spend more than that. When you look at the towns that are the size of Cohasset in population, we spend more than that. Georgetown, which was used as a marker by some people, we spent more than $4,000 per student, more than Georgetown, which was used as part of the analysis of saying that we don't spend enough on our students. So this one bar chart, which by the way, if you were doing an analysis regarding the school systems, one of the places you would go would be the Department of Education. And if you had research that did not have the Department of Education, one might ask why you don't have it? Because that's one of the first places you would. And when you look at it, the first place that you would probably look, you come up with Cohasset is above everyone around us. So I hope not only will we see this tonight, but I hope we can get this out and that the parents of the town can see this and be assured that not only is the select board and the other boards in this town, but as a town, we support our school system. And here it is in black and white. So that's on that one, thank you.
So if I go to the next slide, I'm going to go deep down just a few seconds. So one of the things that's really important, one of the reasons that Dessie knows what it does is because things are not all in schools, right? So these are just, I think these are some things I pulled out, they're just very large examples. But health insurance is in the shared budget, it's four of the schools, we have 4.2 million dollars of that, it's not in the school. School resource offices support the schools, it's 106.25. It almost doubled because we had a second resource office in 2006. That was over $100,000. Property casualty workers' compensation, it's the school share that is just shy of $500,000, that's not in the school. And Shell Star O-Tech, which is often in, when there's a O-Tech or those are usually in a school budget, it's about 40,000. Well, it's not in ours. That's 170,000, that's by the way, going up to, oh, it's $300,000 next year when we have five more kids going to school. But that's another reality. So just those four cost centers, or just shy of $5 million that's being spent for the schools, it's not in the school. The number at the bottom that you see when they have the five-year forecast is funding gets spent solely by the schools on teachers' salaries, on books and classrooms and sports teams and everything else. There's another piece that I don't think anybody realizes, and it's in the town budget, the facilities department. We get 30 days, and it's much more robust than it was when I got here, because everyone said it needs to be a lot more robust. But there's two things in there, and it's in the town side of the budget, it's not the shared budget. There's literally expenses for all three schools, for resources, right? In the town side budget, they're in, so there are literally expenses that go to pay for the school buildings that the town side budget pays for. Plus, that most of the time is spent, most of the facilities team's time is spent on the schools, and appropriately so, right? They're our biggest buildings and they use non-scar, so they're all there all the time. So of our school, on the town side, 636,700 is running. I didn't add every single lineup by, I did it percentage-based based on numbers. That's a lion's share of facilities much on the town side. And again, it's not that it's not appropriate, and I know there's a history to it, I think I can publish that claim. But that's literally buried on the town side of the budgets and you don't see it.
With the facilities budget, one of the things that needs to be known is that historically, the school used to have facilities within its budget and employees within it. But over the years, what had happened was, on the school lineup items, this is many years, but this isn't the current school, by the way, was that the money that was supposed to be used for maintenance and that was budgeted was not spent and it was moved and used for other purposes, such as when they had budget problems regarding special education, which would happen every year, things like that. So for years, the maintenance was shorted on the schools. So at a certain time, the decision was made by the town boards before us to move the facilities to its own separate line and put it in the town side. And therefore, every dollar that got put in there would go to facilities and go to the maintenance of all of our town buildings. And so I think that's an important thing to know for people, that what you're highlighting here is that so many of our town departments support the school systems within the mission beyond what they have to do on the town side.
And again, if you remember, we had the presentation from Jake, only a month or so ago, talking about while I was doing my summer vacation, right? Facilities spent most of their summer, schools, yeah, appropriately so, they were fixing things and eating. And they've done amazing work since the department was broadened and the skill set grew. They've been able to do a lot more in the schools for the last seven, eight years and it should be, and it should be. And the staff's right, probably. So those are just a few things throughout the school funding underscores that the town is fully invested in funding schools. If I could flip to the next one, Kevin. So this is, I'm talking about IT. So for starters, we have three IT budgets. There's a town side one, which is just town software. There's a school side one that has personnel and also school, what will be software and services. And then there's a central budget, which covers everybody. And that's our internet connections, it's our fiber network, it's our data centers. And it's the core, it's three and a half staff members. It used to be two, and one of them has shifted to the school budget and the central budget, which all went to headcount for the schools. So there's three and a half budgeted positions that are shared. And this is, this chart shows how many services are listed, just since Jan, January. And you can see the lion's share of 42 in part of the schools. The next closest, 587 involves town hall and town hall meetings. And it also went down to one, USC had one. So you can see the schools are getting, as more quickly so, the lion's shares. For example, when the schools get, right before opening, for the first week, the staff is in Belgium.
I just said one thing on this, is that, you know, it was talked about, about IT and in looking at it, that there might be too much IT and how the town, if the town were to cut IT in any way, shape or form, it would be devastating to supporting the schools. You can see from the number of calls that they have right there. If you want to, if you cut the number of staff, that means they can't get to the schools. That means learning isn't going to happen because either a teacher's computer or otherwise isn't going to work. So I think it's important for people to note again, how some of these town departments support the schools, even though they aren't contained within the school budget. And the numbers here are frankly staggering with the amount of support that they give the schools.
I think the next one's actually even more talent. These are the number of devices supported. And you can see there's 850 bring arounds devices, those are all the sort of sites. I test to support every single one of them. Chromebooks, there's 820, and that's part of having them in the schools that the town has eaten. iPads and iPhones, those are, I should say, I shouldn't begin to call them. Yeah, it's mostly the elementary level, but those are 432. The only thing that's even a little bit close is workstation and laptops. And again, the larger shares will certainly, so if I remember the count, it's 2,200, something like that.
1493. It's 88%, so the devices are 88% school-driven.
And.
Which you would think, because of the number of staff and the number of students.
Correct, and they get it appropriately so, so that's where, that's where the lion's share of support is. And again, so it's important to know that when we created this, when I got here, there was no idea. There was nothing. And we had one gentleman who was a consultant who backed us up in from his basement a little bit. Now, we go right there, I can't figure it out. So after HR, this is the next thing that had to be conquered. And we built a robust unified system that has fiber connections between all of our buildings, that has secured data centers and has also professional staff. And it also has robust cybersecurity, which is really, really important. I think you've heard about the term, the things that happen on locations. In fact, even here, the Jumanal Center was affected, town was not. One of the other towns was, fortunately, we were not protected.
And we had redundancies so that when the regional center was down, we could still.
We could still operate our posts and whatever. And we also have, you know, added things, do fact authentication, things that which are old, which tighten for them. And again, in terms of budgets, I don't have the slide up here, but we spent about 1.4 million dollars. The core of it is in our central budget. Situate spends about a million and a half plus, as far as we can tell, because they have their own separate support for police and fire that don't show up. And then Hingham's well over 2 million. So our budgets will certainly not add up. And the fact is that we have a lot of, by having one unit, we can support everyone. And we're too small a town of silence. So we built the system that was designed to be supportive of everybody. Again, with the primary support during the school year or during the school day for the schools, and it always happened.
Can you remind me when these students first had Chromebooks or trying to remember the year of it started?
Oh, I was on the school committee.
Eight years ago, maybe, it was a while ago.
Yeah, so Katie and I joined in 2015. The Technology Learning Committee had been doing some work. I want to say maybe 2016, 2017. And then it evolved into to bring your own device and it migrated from the highest grades down to the lowest grades. And we didn't have, we had iPad carts in the elementary schools because the low-aged kids weren't bringing those home. And I just want to comment though on the 850. What that means is that every student who has their own device has to bring it in and have it serviced and have the SSL security updates so that while they're in school on the school network on their device, they don't get any viruses or any malware or anything like that. And that's Newman's work, all those.
Yeah, the staff spends days and days and days processing all of these. They do everything in advance, so actually it worked, it's one of the biggest town hall events. It's about a lot of time. But again, that security, again, not just that cybersecurity, super critical. We don't think twice about it until something fails, so the goal is not to have a fail. Ronald's team have done great.
What are the, oh, go ahead, sorry.
How many IT people?
We have four. There's three in the central budget and one in the schools.
So it's fair to say for you to cut, say, two of them, mitigate these services by a half more?
It would, we wouldn't be able to service, we'd have to, we'd have to hire outside contractors, which costs a lot. And so, which we did, by the way, at the beginning, before we built our system, we had to have outside contractors, which is expensive and also not reliable, if you have people on staff, then they're needed.
One of the things I think also with this that people need to realize is that Cohasset was way ahead of the curve in making sure that the kids had Chromebooks, so even if they had their own, which had to be serviced by the town, when COVID happened, there was a lot of towns, not only in Massachusetts, but throughout the country, who then had to figure out how are they going to get laptops to their kids to take classes at home. Cohasset, well, like every other town had to struggle through COVID. We did not have that issue. And post-COVID, Cohasset students and the schools are one of the few towns that has scored better post-COVID than previously, and they haven't, they haven't had a, they haven't backslid like so many communities out there with their test scores. So, you know, the town was way ahead of the curve on this. And it was due to obviously all the boards, the schools, the town, everyone working together on it. So I think that's something that should be noted as well.
The work that was done to build that work, no one imagined it, education, hall, so government. Thank you for pointing that out. And the town built its fiber network. And again, we have robust conversations from capital budget community, budget everybody else. As said, it saved us countless thousands of dollars because we're not paying a fee to anybody to maintain those, to manage them for us, which a lot of the communities stopped.
And there's been a sea change in IT in terms of, if we go back to when we started, the capital budget request for hard items, you know, not just the iPads and the Chromebooks, but things that are now cloud-based applications. So we're securing licenses and certificates for different applications that are not funded out of capital anymore. They're in the IT budget. And if you look at the expenses from. That are not funded out of capital anymore, they're in the IT budget, and if you look at the expenses from from that. They've gone twofold because, over time since twenty twenty. We cut because of, that's where those expenditures are happening.
Right, and it just, you could go the first year of purchasing something, then the account line, all the support after that is talent.
Yeah.
Um, and that, and that's the case with, um, with a lot of cybersecurity stuff, typically buying product initially to the IT places, right? Uh, Ron was just, uh, uh, emailing us today. We've had a lot of conversations with the state, so it's exploring opportunities to bring our cost down. Uh, so, uh, our famous process of, we work something out, so, uh, we've done a, a big partner with the state too, um. So it, it, yeah, we knew some, some, some basic facts just out there. So, um, I'm gonna pivot super low for a second, then I'm gonna talk about my office. Uh, so one of the conversations I've been, I've had is about, uh, this monstrous expansion. So when I started here in twenty fourteen, there were three D, um, self-intuition. Today, there's four and a half budget positions, five bodies, this is one, which is paid half in a different, in a different zone. The only two new positions that have it was one, this is ten badge position, which is Michelle now. That was a procurement position, it's created in twenty fifteen, was purple, it was upgraded in twenty twenty to the position that is now, and that's not a lie. I didn't start there, start somewhere else, but the positions have become increasingly organized. The communication specialist was created twenty-two as a result of what we're directing, it's like, we can do this, coming out of the bubble, we need to, to do our communications. And by the way, we were the first community in the area that now everyone, most people now have, do not bring this.
And we don't have a town newspaper.
No, unfortunately, when I started here, it was the Nellie, right?
Right.
Uh, now there's, um, and and the patient budget sometimes, that doesn't matter. But it's not, so, we, we need to communicate, uh. We need to communicate, and, uh, so those are the two additions, and that's a substantial amount of salary during those positions. I mean, so we have a budget of thirty thousand dollars, um, and two, three positions like that spend a lot. Uh, so that, that, that's driven the, the, the. And again, I don't apologize for the second, it's the right thing to have done, I think we have a lot of value out of it, and that, but that's what it is. When you look at, if you're looking at a budget of three million dollars, uh, and and you have an increase in the problem, that's nothing. But we have a budget as small as this, this, this one of those things, the percentages are only demonstrate the actual part of the money. Uh, so.
So you, so you're sure you're not hiding thousands of other employees in town hall? When I see Facebook one, four, three, um, everyone charges that there, that there's thousands of people at town hall and. And with the cost then drive it, and so in in twelve years, we've gone from three employees to four and a half in twelve years, so. That's.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, I believe the sound of room of eight people.
Maybe they're counting, maybe they're counting the ghosts of town hall. Historic side, yeah.
We've had a lot of these lately, it could be.
I've also heard it, uh, said or suggested that instead of our communication specialist, I remember when they came on, that we engage. Community engagement specialists. I was just wondering if that's been defined.
Well, actually, the communication person is almost.
That's what I thought, I was just.
So that the full title is communications and community engagement specialists, I could fit that.
Fair enough, that's, thank you, just answered, I think, hopefully that answers one of the queries that was put out, that we engage a community engagement specialist.
So one of the things that that person, that position has done over the last number of years is. Public forums on zoning, the MVP, um, the community forums, all kinds of things, they've been involved in those things, they've, they've worked at the seniors. That work with a library, that work with schools, I mean, so there's been, at the firework, I mean, at least, so that the, and the goal, they they've been out there. And even now, one of the things that that that's better and also more complicated is we've done this, right, we're hybrid meetings. These things are successful, it takes a lot more work to run a hybrid meeting than it does to run something on its person. You need more technology, it's points to have some, it's been critical. So the position, which is very heavily filled today, um, I've met two people in it in the past three years.
I, I would say one thing also is that, um, cities and towns across the Commonwealth are beefing up their town hall offices. Uh, not just for procurement, which is done here, but also regarding grants, which also is a part of the. Um, you know, job descriptions within these as well, so whether it comes from the planning department or whether it comes from a town hall grant. Um, that's where, that's what everybody's doing, because, um, while on the federal side, you might see that the, it's very hard for towns to get grants anyway. But on the state side, for sure, there's a, there's a lot of money out there. And if your town does not have procurement specialists and people doing that to apply for the grants and more importantly, execute them. Um, you are, you are gonna be just thrown down the list and you're not gonna get any, any of that money for anything. And and so, like I said, you're seeing city departments that are beefing this up, small towns are as well. Uh, and and the, and for the amount of of grants that you get. Uh, it helps offset strategically put money where where it needs to go in the town, otherwise it would have to come from a tax levy. Or an override or or somewhere else, but, um, it's very important that we strategically are able to do that, and 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 procurement is is so big because. Um, if you're, if you're good at it and you're following it through execution, you're actually saving the town money. From things that happen, and when things do happen, which they will during construction, whenever you have construction, it's like having an open patient on the surgery table. Um, when things do happen, you have the people there who are ready to get on it, uh, and and get things fixed when they do have them.
And we mentioned last week, uh, David, that, uh, the, all the planning wars, uh, planning staff has done the last few years. I cut a slot tonight, which I couldn't, uh, talking about the great communities program, that's something that my office is managing, Michelle's great one. We've got over a million dollars in grants in the town, before I got here, we just not abandoned the program. Uh, we, we got it going, part of the AC, we got it through town, we got the rest components of ten million and three. We've run over a million dollars in grants for all kinds of great communities, yeah, all kinds of upgrades. Seventy-seven percent of that fu- of those funds, not of the schools, for, but Deariel, the husband, and the high school, for lighting. Boilers, the building systems, controls for motivation improvements, and again, you know, a big building, so again, it's. Which is another example of, you know, that the, having those bodies that meant to join the program and it's quite a million dollars, which by the way. Generate savings every single day because of the efficiencies of those, those, those savings. And then the last thing I want to make out, it's just something that gets me confused, so, um, we have the police budget, the fire budget, basically the same. What's buried in the police budget is the regional nine-one-one costs, and this is from twenty-five, four hundred and fifty thousand. So it gives the police, and and by the, the chief has complained to me about this in the past, I'm just a poodle, but. Uh, it's now becoming an issue, so I'm gonna point out that, that that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars supports all over our institutions. Not just the police, it's just the police who used to have the dispatches, so it just kind of stayed in their office, the regional four. That's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we take that out, the police and fire bunch basically is. Which event story, pretty close to. And the four fifty, I mean, pays for a regional service, um, that is, uh, Orwell, Hull, uh, Pagan and Cohasset. That has really, uh. It brought us immense gains and spawned the eight departments together, it's helped us work in the regional way. We've also generated hundreds of thousands of dollars of grants, uh, in, right, working together, and we, the system has got all kinds of upgrades. We've got radios, we've got, um, computers for our fireplace departments through the nine-one-one center from the state. Because we've got extra money as a result of that. And I wonder, we probably should do another highlight of how great the nine-one-one's, the regional. Uh, so, but again, from a budgetary perspective, it 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 artificially includes this question. Maybe we should break it out, it's probably not a good idea going forward. Uh, we have a town cabinet, wouldn't I tweet that to the regional, some communities do break it out. I just wanna highlight that, uh, it's not a police expense, it's a town.
Another thing with, uh, police is that, you know, we've had overtime that we're trying to tackle to get lower. Uh, and by going to town, being last few years, we were able to get police out of civil service in order to hire staff. Uh, we ended up getting three, I believe, from the academy, who were some of the highest ones in the academy. Uh, and that helps you tackle and try to lower, um, the overtime, and of course, that's dependent upon emergencies and things like that. If you have COVID or something, again, you know, that that would change the dynamic. Um, so if you ever look to reduce the force by, by any, any amount. Um, your overtime budget is going to go up. So it's a, it it's a scale, you take one off one, the other one goes up. Um, and I think that's something that people need to understand as well, so, you know, there's lots of things in and out of the budget. Um, there's lots of levers that go on and scales, and you have to know them all and you have to be able to describe them all. Uh, when you're looking at a budget, so you can't just myopically say, well, we, we're saving something here, one for one, it does not happen. In most cases, not all cases. But the police, it's very important that we keep both of our police and fire fully staffed. Um, up to the, not only the standards that we have with our union contracts with them, but also for the service for the citizens of Cohasset. You, you cannot short your, your police and fire, uh, because you're putting lives on the line.
So we have many more of these slides, I, I cut, I cut a number of them tonight because everyone wants to be here, I mean, I just hope there was a flavor.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, so we could be more of these, so I, and I maybe this morning, should I have more of a budget conversation, I think, because I hope you do.
Yeah, um, I, I was gonna segue in into that since, since we're talking about it, and I, I just, I want to be clear that this is not. In any way, shape or form, an attack on the school budget. It's, it's easy to look at a number and make it, it tell you the story that you want it to tell. And it's the details and it's the context and it's the rationale. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, the budget is forty-five, fifty pages. And if I didn't know from experiencing on school committee, what was above the line and what was below the line, it's very hard not to know that, right? So it, it's not, it, it's, I'm not faulting anybody for that, it's, it's a very difficult thing to know unless you're totally immersed in the budget. Um, which I was when I was on school committee and and I'm trying to be here, so. I, I think, um, my perspective is we will continue to be good partners with the schools. I think Mr. Senior has done, uh, yeoman's work over the last few years, doing what he can to make the budgets whole. And I look forward to much more frequent and robust conversations about our budget process. Um, in total, whether it's topical by a department or whether it it's, um, the whole thing. Um, now that we have someone on board who can run a report quarterly and come in and give us a presentation on it. Um, and so that we can see where we are at any, any point in time. Um, and so I, I appreciate the context in which you put around the numbers and, um. I think that there's a lot, I mean, off the top of my head, I, I, I would add average, average levy per household. I, I think when you look at, because I was looking at average levy per capita. And you have communities, although it doesn't sound like a lot, but there are some communities based on the number of households in their population. Their, their average household is three point nine and some are three point one. So it depends upon, it depends upon the composition of your population, how many are below the age of eighteen, how many are eighteen to sixty-five, and how many are over sixty-five. Will sway when you look at a per capita basis, so when I was doing this for schools, I always looked at it on a per household basis. Because it's the household paying the tax, not each person in the population, I think that would be a good slide to show. Um, and I did some work on it, I can send it to you, um. Um, because that kind of just puts us in context, we know where we are in school spending, on our peer group, where are we in terms of our. Um, our, our tax levy for one thousand and our tax levy on the average household, I think would be very good data points.
And it's one of those things that with Desi, they normalize everything.
Yeah.
If you go to the state DMRC, they don't, so that's one of the problems, again, use one example, Carlin. Very nice, we, we use them as an education edge one, if you put their budget, they don't, they have real school systems, so they're not carrying any medical costs in their budget. Insurance costs, and they have a call fire, so it was a one full-time or seventy-six. Um, and they have, they literally drop something, respond to fires, and they also don't have a water, so I'm not sure, I have a big pump of water. So that's just an example, if you don't, if you don't look, you have to drill down in the budget to know that, and then you suddenly see this, well, there's millions of dollars of difference, even though we're in the same.
The same, right, right, but, 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 but even so, and and, uh, you know. The, the, the water sewer comparison, I think is good, but we have a, a self-funding enterprise, so I think you have to take that off the table, it's not part of the tax levy. I mean, it's a fee that people pay, but it's not part of.
It does get rolled over, it's only a cost exception.
Okay, all right. Um, any other questions on this?
No, thank you.
No, anything else?
I really appreciated this presentation, thank you very much.
Yeah, that was a good one.
I hope this cleared up any miscommunications or misinformation that's happened publicly about our town.
And and I, I think, um, thank you for saying that, and and I think that. The best thing, Mr. Frog said it earlier about the RTF, you have questions, call. Questions are good, questions show that people wanna learn and understand and call the town office, call me, I have a grasp of of the budgeting process. I'm happy to talk about it, um, and put some context around, around things, so, um.
Yeah, please call and don't just post on the internet, that's like asking the universe for an answer. So, you know, get, get to the people who know and have the actual factual information, so. Um, and we're all here, not just us, but there's advisory board, there's, could be, of all the other boards as well, so.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, we'll move on to select board comments, Ms. Rollins.
None.
Mr. Grady.
Um, I think we said it all tonight, I think it was a good meeting, um. A lot across the board to thank that presentation again, Chris, London, Karen, uh, Alan, Michelle, thank you so much for all you do. I mean, bottom of my heart. It's a pleasure to work with you. And hopefully, we're gonna get these things over the top, the, the right things to do, get our groups together, but, uh, again, just my thanks. I had to say that.
Okay, Mr. Frog?
Um, just wanna thank everybody for the presentations tonight, um, and we'll move on to a special town meeting. I wanna also thank the advisory board and the capital budget for doing all the work that they're doing, uh, going forward on, on all the articles that we have. Um, and just for people to remember, um, you know, not just the select board, but all the town boards. What we're trying to do is to move the town forward to bring our operations, not only physically, but administratively into the twenty-first century. Uh, and, you know, if anybody took the tour of the, of the police and fire station, um, they could plainly see the deficiencies with that. Um, we have other areas in town that obviously need to be done, there's been really four major projects, we've talked about four, there's the police and fire. Uh, the schools, again, they apply to the state, uh, regarding that, and we will not know, it could take five years, it could take seven years, we don't know. Um, the last two, they have not been invited into, uh, the MSRB fund to to get funding for any improvements in the schools. Then finally, of course, we have the, the water department, uh, which will come down the line, but again, that will generally come out of, um. Out of, you know, water fees and and bonding through that when we have to deal with the water plant. And as we've said before, um, the federal regulations that have come down on water in the next few years coming down, um, over the horizon. Um, those aren't, geez, we don't think we need to follow them, it's, you're going to follow them and you're gonna have to bring your water. Uh, department and distribution system up to the level to comply with them, so. Um, so we'll, you know, that's again, over the horizon, uh, but it's not gonna affect things like the other three projects, so. We'll take these on as a town, uh, and so don't be fearful or otherwise, um, we'll, we'll take them on one at a time and. And, um, digest them one at a time and make sure that they, they can fit with what the town needs and then just go from there, but. All the towns have different capital projects they have to deal with, whether it, whether it's schools or safety buildings or otherwise, and. And we'll go, go through it in a, a contemplative way and make sure that the town of Cohasset is ready for the future, thanks.
Thank you. Um, and I have no comments for tonight, eh, open enough. So may I have a motion to approve, uh, the minutes of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or conversation? No, okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no topics, not reasonably anticipated, may I have a motion to adjourn at eight forty-nine PM?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.